Probably have not been, been kept up to where they should have been because we had some assets back there and we were drawing five and six and so forth, you know, percent interest rate on some of those. And that interest was coming forward to subsidize the costs of operating the systems. Well, we're down now where on most all the investments, uh, that the highest rate that you can probably get is point eight six or eight nine or eight point one nine oh percent. That's less than one percent, of course. So, uh, since the rates haven't kept up with what we needed, uh, we're having to utilize more and more and more of the cash that had been, uh, reserved back in, in years past.
Questions?
Yeah. Going over past the financial statements, of course, the next one's the profit and loss, uh, I believe. Well, statement of revenue expenses and changes in net assets is the next one. And, uh, uh, you can run down through there and kind of see, uh, that, yes, we are eating away at some of our assets here because the net assets at the end of the year have declined somewhat. Um, and you can see where those have occurred by the comparison. Then going over, and you've got the statement of cash flows. This is where all the money came from, and this is where it all went, how it was utilized for both 2009 and 2010. Then the next is the notes to the financial statement. So here you get the nature of the operations, basis of accounting and presentation, use of estimates, cash equivalents, accounts receivable, investments, inventories, capital assets, contributed capital. And there was, for the year's end of December 31st, 2010 and 2009, there was no contributed capital. So, in the last sentence on that page. And the notes continue on and, and it adds as a whole, uh, just about everything in the report. Deposits and investments, summary of the carrying values. Then you go over to the additional notes and it, uh, outlines the restricted assets, what they are and the balances for them, the capital assets and balances for those. Long-term liabilities, water and sewer revenue bonds and the bond issues, refunding revenue bonds, the rates at the time that this report was prepared. Talks about significant estimates and concentrations, contractual agreement with Carroll Boone Water District. And then you come over to the accountants' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of the financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. So they go into the internal control over the financial reporting that we have and or had at that time in my department and the compliance.
Excuse me just a second.
Yes.
When we look at page seventeen, which is continuation of internal control over financial reporting, um, the first paragraph on that page reads, "A significant deficiency is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in an internal control that is less severe than a material weakness, yet important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. We consider the deficiency described in the accompanying schedule of findings and responses as item 2010-06 to be a significant deficiency."
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Let's go to 2010-06 and see what it refers to here. Management is responsible for establishing and maintaining effective internal controls over financial reporting. Controls are not in place to ensure that management periodically reviews and adjusts the allowance for doubtful accounts, bad debts. Pause. We noted the department does not review or adjust allowance periodically for accounts that are considered uncollectible. When amounts are determined uncollectible, the amounts are directly written off instead of written off against the allowance account. In other words, the allowance account is a reserve that's established for that purpose, what you estimate that your, your debt is going to be. The effect, potentially material misstatements in the financial statements or material misappropriations of assets due to error or fraud could occur and not be prevented or detected in a timely manner. Recommendations, we recommend that procedures be put in place to ensure that the allowance is evaluated periodically and adjusted based on expected write-offs. This is the response of the officials at that time. View of responsible officials and planned corrective actions. Due to limited personnel, the department has been unable to provide these entries. That's because we only have in my department, me and three other people. And we're going to take that into consideration. And as a matter of fact, we have really in the last, oh, thirty days, made great strides in collecting delinquent accounts. We've really been working on them. And, uh, uh, so as a matter of fact, I have given the order in the last few days, if they're not paid by five o'clock, to shut them off first thing the next morning. And they're significant amounts.
Good. Good. That's a step in the right direction.
So we're, we're, we're working on these. They're, you know, this is kind of the thing that it didn't get here in six months, didn't get this way. And it's going to take a little time to correct them all. But we're working on it, even the internal control of review by different people and, and things of this nature. Now, we have a pretty significant, it's not related specifically to this, but internal control of, in our city, in that every check that's written requires, doesn't matter if it's for a dollar and fifty cents, requires two signatures. And none of us in the accounting department are authorized to do that. Or at least, I'm not authorized to do it. We may have a situation in an extreme emergency where one other person might get. But since I've been here, that has not happened, that has not occurred.
Okay. As I was, may I go ahead?
Yes.
As I was looking through this audit scope and results attachment, I noticed on page five, I mean, there were several red flags, if you will, in here, but I noticed under debt covenants, it said, "We noted the department does not test compliance with its debt covenants and violated certain covenants of its debt, debt agreements. We noted four of the covenants were violated as of the end of the fiscal, fiscal year. We recommend that procedures be put in place to ensure the covenants are tested periodically throughout the year to ensure compliance."
That is another thing that we're working diligently on.
Excellent.
Is to, is to, to ensure that throughout the year that we can test those debt covenants and make sure that we're in compliance. Instead of getting this little sheet paper right here that says rates and general covenants to operate and says that we're out of compliance, that I have talked with you all about previously, we're at ninety-two percent and we need to be a hundred and twenty percent of net revenue over this $252,000 that we have, are obligated for. Now, we're not behind on any payments, don't misunderstand me. We're right up to date on every payment on every bond issue that we had. But with this situation like this, if we don't correct it, that's where they will come in and correct it for us. And I don't think that any of us here want to be faced with that situation because then it's out of our control. The other thing is, that as long as we have this problem of complying with debt covenants, we couldn't, if we wanted to do another bond issue, we couldn't find an underwriter anywhere that would take it, I don't think. Why would they?
Right.
So, at any rate, uh, this is, this is a fairly, I know this is kind of jumping on down on the agenda, but it's a pretty significant issue and we have to work diligently, I think, to correct this.
So, so next we see information technology. Currently, there are no documented policies, procedures, processes or control in place to limit access and authorization to accounting software. We recommend that policies and procedures be developed to provide control over information technology. Now, as far back as March of last year, I was trying to, it says in our code that there should, there shall be a policy book, a policy manual for the finance department. And as far back as March of last year, I was, so a year ago, I was trying to get the finance department to come through with this policy manual so that we would have that in place, which it calls for in our code. So is, it's been a year, is there any progress being made there?
There is progress. We have had some lengthy discussions on it. And let me just, let me just stand here and tell you that the workload on the finance department has, it's been pretty heavy over the last year, year and a half or something like that. And, um, so there's probably some things that, you know, it's kind of what deadline do we have today and what have we got to get done, to get payroll out, for instance, to get other things that are immediate. And so some of this had to take a backseat. But we are working on it. We're working on, on securing the servers where somebody can't just walk in. I mean, they're not totally unsecure because those doors are locked and only a limited number of us have, have keys to have access back there. But nevertheless, there are, uh, you know, they're out in the open where anyone could get to them. And, uh, so we're working on some of those things.
Excellent.
And here again, uh, I won't promise you that in thirty days they'll be done, but we're getting there.
Good. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
We're working. So.
Anybody else? I don't know. I find it interesting that, and I realize that there's very few sitting at this table that were at this table for the period of time that this audit covers. I find it interesting that the responses, uh, to the six findings and also the letter that went back to the audit firm, uh, the biggest, the biggest issue and answer to all the problems is we can't do it because we don't have enough people. It took us six months before we're even discussing this audit at the table. Number two, uh, and I, and I realize we've been told not to micromanage, but why has there not been any, uh, look at putting more people into the finance department if in fact you can't do it with what you have or contracting it out? You know, it, it seems like the, the pat answer is, we can't do it because we don't have enough people. But I, I've yet to hear that we need more people in the finance department. The first that we heard of any of these findings was whenever you mentioned, I don't know, a couple of months ago, uh, the, the issue with the, the water rates or whatever it was with the bond rating. And to me, that seemed pretty significant for this thing to just be sitting on our, our desk with no, uh, no action being taken by this table or presented to this table to how to, how to resolve the problem.
Mr. Powell, you, you got these after we received them. Every one of the council members got these just after we got them.
I understand that.
It was never brought to the table by council member.
It was never brought to the table by the mayor.
It's not my job.
Define.
The council has to.
You set, you set the agenda, you're allowed to add audits to the agenda by yourself.
Okay, okay. Where are you going? So go ahead.
I, I find it hard to believe that asking departments to cover audits that are pretty significant is a legislative task that, that we're supposed to assume, that we're supposed to ask when we're going, and finally, that's what it took, asking it be put on the agenda to discuss not only these audits, but the state audit. And I, I think somebody needs to define, you know, and if it's there somewhere, I asked the city attorney to tell us where it's at and whose responsibility it is when these hit the city hall, uh, who, who answers what, when and where? Because I had a very interesting discussion with the Legislative Audit Committee person at the municipal league and, uh, there wasn't any indication that that was council's issue to, to make sure that audit reports are brought to, brought to the table and that possible solutions that are given back to the audit firm might not have hurted, have hurt to have run it by this table if, if that's what you're saying. And, but before we got it, the answers to the audit were already made. So I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding where, the fact that we're discussing it and if we didn't bother to bring it to anybody's attention, why, uh, why it's necessarily put in our laps that we didn't do anything about it.
Mr. Vito.
These issues are being corrected in the finance department. Lonny's not been on board that long. There's a backlog of work that he's working his way through. We're lucky to have him. Uh, you know, in time, these things will be addressed. There wasn't any substantive issues brought out in any of these audits, as he said in the first one, uh, on the first page, that all respects, it's a clean audit. Now, you may interpret that in a different manner, but I don't.
Well, and I, if I recall, that was the same thing essentially in the state audit that we discussed previously. There was no material issues that were brought out. But nevertheless, uh, Mayor, there's two people that want to ask questions or speak.
Are you done, Mr. Vito?
Yes.
In looking back through some of the past audits, some of the problems that we're seeing in these current audits are some of the same problems we've been seeing in audits for several past years. And some of the answers are the same, we can't do it because of this, or, or we're working on it. And that's, that's distressing to me. It seems like we should be making some forward progress. And so I'm really hoping that we will be able to make some forward progress and, and take care of some of these deficiencies and, and make sure that we're, our standing is as it should be. So I'm, I just want to offer some encouragement.
Well, I've only been here about four months and I don't mean to keep, you know, dodging the bullet, but just if you'll give me some time here, I, I think that we're going to make some significant progress on these things. And, um, I intend to, and I know, I know they're there. And, uh, and then again, another part of the problem is that there's been some, some turnover, you know, there have been finance directors and then there's turnover and so on and so forth. But, uh, at any rate, uh, all I can tell you is that I'm, I'm after it, I'm working on it.
Excellent. Thank you. And so you'll check back with us some time at a time and let us know what kind of progress you're making?
I'm going to be here, I guess, at every one of your council meetings. So, and I'm available from seven-thirty till about five-thirty every day.
Thank you. I just, I want to offer encouragement.
Thank you.
I know it's an uphill struggle and I, I applaud you for going after it.
Mr. Mayor, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, it's, you know, when I read these, my first thought was to ask Mr. Clark whether or not we needed additional staff. And then I realized too, that actually with the addition of Mr. Clark, we have additional staff, uh, that we've never had before. We've got an accountant, certified accountant in here.
Oh, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Clark.
I thought you said Mr. Park, excuse me. I was, no.
Mr. Clark, uh, and so I think, you know, and like you said, I think there hasn't been a lot of, of catch-up in through here. This is the first time in a long time that we may have even had a, a complete finance department in here in, I mean, several years because like you said, we've had a lot of turnovers. And I'm going back eight, six, eight years before we've had a, a certified financial director in here. So, you know, if you do see, uh, I mean, I don't know whether we need additional people, if you need to rearrange your staff, but it sounds like you're trying to, uh, catch up as fast as you can on there.
We are, and with the staff that we have. And, uh, and we're doing some cross-training. I think we have some issues of, if someone were to get ill or have an accident or whatever, we, we would really be in kind of bad shape. And so, uh, I want to do some, some cross-training of the people that are in my department so that we can cover if that were to happen. I mean, for the last week or two, we've had a lot of illness in, well, in the entire city hall, but in my department particularly, we've had, you know, people having to go home because of whatever people have been getting. And so it's made some difference and, and it, and it even brings home more the significance of the cross-training that we need to do. And that, of course, will take some time, but nevertheless, we're, we're, that's another objective of mine is to get that done. So, anyway. Are there any other questions on that first one that we covered?
Right. Let's move on.
If you want to, if you want to take up the single audit report, you want to do it this evening or do you want to?
Let's do it now.
I'm sorry?
Let's do it now.
This is, this is just dealing with a report on the skid, and it's called SIFA as an acronym. And it's a schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And, uh, that has to be done because of the governmental, government audit standards on this that are issued by the Controller General of the United States. And again, I will call your attention down to the third paragraph on that first page. In our opinion, the schedule referred to above presents fairly, in all material respects, the expenditures of the federal awards on the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas for the year ended December 31st, 2010, in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So that again says that the audit on the federal awards and the expenditures has, has passed muster, so to speak. So if you want to flip through it, uh, back through here, there's internal control over financial reporting, and that's, that internal control has been an issue and it's been an issue for a long time. And we will remedy it as much as we possibly can with some safeguards. So anyway, uh, there's the, the compliance, the responses, um, and then over here you can look down, summary of the, um, auditor's results, um, and they've got boxes checked and so on and so forth that, and I, I generally rely on essentially, if there's anything significantly wrong, they'll so state it here in the opinion section.
Mr. Powell, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. On page eight, we see number nine, which says, "The city qualified as a low-risk auditee as that term is defined, defined in OMB circular, circular A dash one thirty-three." And it says, "No." So we didn't qualify as a low-risk auditee. Can you expand on that a little bit, please?
Well, uh, that is dealing with, again, the internal control and the, uh, we need to, we need to work on that because that is a big issue with all auditor, all auditors and all organizations. And then the other aspect is that, uh, here we're, we're back on the, not in compliance with the bond issues. And that, that says that we're, you know, if we'd had a hundred and fifty percent of net revenue over our bond commitments and those covenants, why, we probably wouldn't have had this unless, you know.
Well, we see here on page nine, and I, and I realize this, you weren't even here when all this happened.
I'm trying.
So, so I'm hoping this is something you'll be able to work on and refine. It says, "Condition incompatible duties exist in various accounting transaction cycles."
Right.
And it says, "The finance director has access and the ability to perform nearly all the accounting functions in the purchasing slash accounts payable, receipt slash accounts receivable and payroll accounting cycles. Although there are compensating controls for certain of the conflicting duties, the fact that this position can perform nearly all duties related to the purchasing cycle, receipt slash accounts receivable cycle, and the payroll cycle presents multiple conflicts and opportunities for potential errors and misappropriations of funds." That's alarming.
Well, uh, that's something that most smaller organizations deal with. Here again, with me coming in as the Director of Finance, I'm approving a lot of things before they're paid and before they even reach the, uh, accounts payable. I'm approving purchases, you know, where, whereas we have like a purchase order and I'm approving the things. I'm rejecting other things that I don't, you know, that we purchase or may need to purchase or want to purchase or whatever. So I'm scrutinizing, scrutinizing that fairly carefully. The other thing is, like I told you a while ago, the dual signatures on all pay, on all checks that are written is a, is a pretty significant thing. A lot of, a lot of places have it if, you know, the check's over a thousand dollars or if it's over a hundred dollars or if it's over five hundred dollars or, but ours, it's every check that is written. The other thing with this cross-training that I'm doing, well, we're going to get where we're going to move some of these duties. For instance, we may move payroll to another person and that person does the payroll and takes it out of the, the hands of just one person. And then we may substitute something that that other person is doing to keep that person busy. So, so again, uh, that's what we're trying to do. We're, we're not perfect, but we're pretty darn good. Okay?
Okay.
Yes. This, this would be, this would really be scary in a lot of, lot of situations, and it sounds worse than it really is. But, but I reconcile the bank accounts. There's thirty-one or thirty-two bank accounts, as we've talked about before. I reconcile those. I reconcile those. I see what goes through there. I see the transfers and everything. I do that personally. Takes a while, but I do it. And if I have questions, I go run them down and say, "Okay, I'm off fifty dollars here. Where is it? Why is it this way?" So, anyway.
None else? If nothing else, then I believe we've covered all the issues on the big key to audits.
Nothing else?
Okay.
We need to take a ten-minute recess.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll be back in session. We are currently at under new business discussion of number two, water rate increases. Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second?
Second.
All right, floor is open.
Yes, I brought this up because I think we need to, um, Mr. Clark has pretty much explained all the reasons why we need to increase the water rate. We, we visited this earlier in the year and, um, we didn't take any action. He raised it by three percent, said it was a down payment, which it was. I think we should, um, redo this ordinance, put the proper increase in it, which you might have by now.
Okay, Mr. Raphael, um, you had asked me to, uh, try to make a computation to see how much we did need to raise it. And I've, I've, I've done some numbers. I raised it three percent. Uh, it looks like it would probably take eight or nine, maybe ten percent to get us out of this situation that we find ourselves in. But let me, let me tell you a few other things that have occurred since you and I talked. Uh, I went back and I looked at our wastewater rates. Our wastewater rates have not been raised in, as best I can tell, at least the last eight years. And I could be mistaken on that, but that's kind of, so our, on this report that came in the audit report, the, we billed on the, um, water revenue and the wastewater revenue, and this is the two thousand and ten from the audit report that they made the computation, the wastewater rates were ninety-one percent of the water rates. Well, I looked at what they were for two thousand and eleven, and that has dropped to eighty-nine percent of the water rates. So, if we were to look at raising some of the wastewater rates instead of just all on the water rates, it might be a better alternative. I don't know. But with that said, and the mayor and I have discussed this at length. And, uh, I had some contacts from years past doing lots of things that came up today from Little Rock. There were two ladies that worked for an organization in Little Rock that I've done a lot of work for in the past. And, uh, didn't cost us anything. They came up last night. We met with them ten o'clock today, uh, for about three hours. And we discussed the whole infrastructure, not just the bond issue, but our whole infrastructure, our water lines, our wastewater lines, everything. And they have access to some professionals that it won't cost us, as I understood, is that right?
That's what I understood.
That are professionals in analyzing water and wastewater rates for cities. And so it would be my suggestion, instead of me trying to come up with a number that's going to solve our problem, for us to, since it's no cost to us, and they're gonna, they're gonna try to move this forward fairly quickly, get one of these professionals in here to do a thorough analysis of what, where we are and where we need to go. Not, not only to cover our covenants here with these bonds, but to also start looking at the future for not total replacement at one time, of course, but a partial replacement, maybe, over a, a period of years, you know? And so, uh, like I said, it appears to me that we're going to need to do, if we use my numbers, a minimum of eight percent if we do it on the water, in addition to the three that we've already done. So, but I would ask you if you would allow us to have the time to get these folks that are professional in this area to come in and do an analysis for us?
What timeframe are we talking about?
Uh, I'd say...
She didn't give us one. She said it, just a matter of her contacting them, contacting us, setting up the time and date to get, to get started on, so.
I would, I would attempt to get it done in thirty days.
Sounds like a great plan.
So, uh, we had a very good, we had a very good meeting. Uh, we, we talked about a whole lot of things, but this was one of the priorities. That was on the list, our, our infrastructure and, uh, you know, um, how, we might proceed with what we need to do and so forth. And of course, all we did was more of a brainstorming thing today and to come up with possible solutions and, and so forth. But this was a place that they suggested that we start.
Well, if we could come up with a longer-term plan, that sounds great.
So.
I won't, I won't suggest what I was going to suggest. I'll just let it move along.
Well, I would, I would move to place this topic on our, uh, April meeting. That gives us about thirty days.
We'll see if we can have it done.
We should hear something about it. We'll stay in touch with them just to make sure.
At least it comes back on the agenda. And if it's happened, then we can proceed at that point.
But I think that would be a whole lot better than, than, you know, I'm not skilled. I, I can work with numbers and I can see what the difference is and what percentages I think we need and so on and so forth. But there may be a lot of other things that I don't know that, that these folks, this is what they do. And so.
I have just a question for reference. Um, do we, do we know?
I have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we need to address this motion.
Is there a second?
No, there wasn't a second. That's what I was going to ask for. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now discussion, go ahead.
Just a question. We know, do we not, how much water we are buying and how much water we are selling? And from that, we could kind of deduce how much water we're losing?
We can.
I'd like to see.
And, uh, well, I can tell you, it's around twenty-five percent.
Around twenty-five percent?
Twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent. It's what we're buying versus what we're billing.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I can't give you the exact gallons because I don't have that, but that's, that's the percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Is there anybody else? Okay. So, any further discussion? Not with the motion. All in favor?
The motion is, please, again.
To place this on the, the, do you say April?
April.
Okay, April, first meeting in April.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, for discussion, further discussion. Give us time to stay in contact with the folks if they come up with some people. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Mayor, can I add just one thing?
Yes, sir.
One of the ladies has been previously, a long, long time ago, whenever I first met her, years and years ago, she was mayor of a small town in South Arkansas. So, she knows, she knows firsthand some of the things that we're dealing with here. And, uh, so she can see it from both sides, you know? So, I think that's a real plus. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is number three, discussion of minimum monthly billing garden meters.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
May I second it? Floor is open.
Well, part of what Mr. Clark was talking about going, uh, through all the codes and everything, I guess they have found a code, uh, a procedure that hasn't been used in the past, which is, uh, a minimum on meters that are shut off. And I just don't think that's right. And I think we should eliminate that practice, especially for garden meters or irrigation meters, whatever you want to call it, since they're, since they're basically turned off half the year anyway.
True.
This, this is an issue I've heard from, from my constituents quite extensively. Um, there has not been one person who's been in favor of this. Some people say, "I don't want to be charged for a water service, this, the service that is turned off and I don't use." Because especially unfair concerning garden meters that are only used normally a few months out of the year. This is just one of the letters I've received. I've received lots of phone calls and a few emails and so forth. And people don't want us to do this. They are vehemently opposed to us doing this. So, I just wanted to share.
Charging them for, you mean a full-time fee?
Right, they don't, don't want to be. They don't want to be charged a full-time fee.
We, we went through the code book. I read through it and then Lonnie read through it, then we read through it together. Uh, we, we kept hearing the term and seeing the term vacation disconnect. There again, we went back through the code forwards and backwards and never found a determination called vacation disconnect. It does not exist in our water code. Basically, what it was, was people would come in and ask, and I guess this had been going on for, what?
I don't know, for a very long time.
A long time. We don't know actually where the origin of it, came about it. But what would happen is when someone would leave or go out of town, they wanted their irrigation, actually, they wanted their house meter turned off and not be charged for it. And then they wanted irrigation meter turned off and not charged for it. Code doesn't call for that. Code says, "If you have a meter, you're going to get charged for it. The only time you're going to get shut off, if you're not paying your bills or you move." Yes, sir?
What's the reconnect fee?
Twenty-five, isn't it?
Twenty-five.
So, it's cheaper to leave it on and, and deal with that because if you're, if you're plumbing, it's good, which is up to the consumer. You shouldn't be losing any water. So.
Mayor?
Yes, yes, we do.
What, what I did was like on your meter at your house or your shop or your, wherever, don't think about garden or irrigation meters for a second. Just, there is no, there's no provision, like the mayor said, anywhere for vacation disconnect on any meter that I looked at. There is provision for a twenty-five dollar fee to turn off a meter to a house or a business and turn a twenty-five dollar fee to turn it back on. Now, there is no provision for turning, for a charge to turn a, an irrigation or a garden meter on or off. But there is no provision that says that they won't bill, be billed when they're turned off. There'd be a minimum bill of, of whatever the rate is at the time. So, well, you've got your home or your business here that if you turn it off or on, there's a twenty-five dollar charge. The, the billing still goes on while it's off on, on a minimum bill because you're not using any water. That same rule, as I read it, applies to these irrigation or garden meters also. And so, uh, but it does specifically state that there is no charge for turning those on or off. So, in the memo that I put out, which probably all of you have read, I tried to, tried to distinguish that. And if, for instance, if you're leaving in the winter and you want to turn the water off because you want it to freeze or something, it might be prudent for you to put a shut-off, you know, on your house or something, uh, that you can turn off and on yourself or someone that you trust and designate. Because the code specifically states that it is illegal and there are significant penalties if any person other than a city employee is found to turn their water on or off. So, that letter, our memo, was, was just trying to bring us into compliance because the vacation disconnect seems to be costing us a significant amount of money every year.
What's the standby fee? The minimum?
Oh, it's ten dollars and something plus the taxes.
Because I know every, every utility has a standby fee.
It's, it's the minimum, and I don't remember now. We raised it from nine ninety to ten twenty or something like that on the three percent. And then, of course, the taxes would be on top of that and, and, uh, so.
What do we figure it costs us a year, about sixteen?
Fifteen or sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand bucks we're not getting paid for.
So, anyway.
So, that's...
But it is just trying, now, if, if, if you all, y'all have the authority to change the code, obviously. So, I mean, that's, but what, what we were trying to do was just to bring things into compliance with what the code said. So.
Yes, sir.
So, we've not been charging a standby fee on garden meters? Or we have?
We haven't.
We have not.
When they're turned off. Neither have we been charging a standby fee on a business or a home or anything else when it was turned off. For, unless it was permanently, if it was permanently vacated, you know, that's a whole different story. But if somebody comes in and said, you know, "I'm going on vacation this winter and I want my water turned off." And I understand why that, they would want to do that. But there's maybe, you know, anywhere from a month to possibly four or five months. Matter of fact, we've got some on record that's been off for, for five years on vacation disconnect.
We have to expend city resources to either turn it on or turn it off. And in those, there's personnel issues, there's gas issues, there's vehicle issues, there's time. It, it, it rolls on and on.
And the date I wrote the memo, there was a hundred and fifty meters on vacation disconnect.
And that's about what the?
That was what the sixteen grand was, went in for the hundred and fifty meters.
Yes, sir.
Is that including garden meters?
That's including.
Irrigation meters?
Yeah, that's all, that was all that were on vacation disconnect, yeah. Hundred and fifty.
What's the, the total, total is garden meters a hundred and fifty or overall is a hundred and fifty?
The overall that were on vacation disconnect.
What's the breakout on that?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. That'd be interesting to know that.
I don't know. I just know that there were a hundred and fifty meters that were on vacation disconnect. I had a breakdown on what they were.
I spoke in several other cities and there's, there's no such thing in their book as a vacation disconnect. It's either the water's either off or the water's either on.
Right, right.
You pay for it to be turned or turned off.
Well, and see, here's another thing too, that when, before the, whenever they were doing the calculations for the bond issues, they take the total number of meters that you have. And that's how they determine, you know, what you can afford, what you can, what, what kind of a bond payments you can make, you know, afford to make and so forth. And, and they base that on a standard billing of, I don't, I don't actually know the numbers, but I know it's... but I know it's, a lot of it is calculated on the total meters that you have, so...
Any questions? Mr. Raphael?
The only place I could find the standby charge was, was in our code, and I would like to just eliminate that whole section. I don't like the idea of charging people for not using water. Especially the people with the irrigation meters, they've gone to a pretty hefty expense putting it in, you know, to save themselves some money. I don't like it. We're already charging them for the water that we lose, I don't like the idea of charging them for the water they don't use. I, maybe we can make up the money some other way, fixing the water lines, I don't know.
Anybody else? Is there, yes, ma'am?
I agree with Mr. Raphael.
Mr. Berry?
Well, I'm a little confused. Ms. Ballance said she agreed with Mr. Raphael, he said two different things. One was the, the regular shut-off for your house, and then you got your, your irrigation meters. I can understand, um, your irrigation meters, you may not have a source where you can turn that off yourself, and you're gonna have to have the city come out and turn that off and on. The house, a lot of houses have their own shut-off for the, for the main house. So I can understand, you know, that, that, it's kind of two separate issues to me. I wasn't aware, I hadn't seen your memo, Mr. Clark, so, uh, what I saw was just a letter from, uh, the only, and I only received this one letter, I didn't receive any emails or anything else from anybody, but, you know, I am a little, I'm not sure yet about the irrigation shut-off and shut-on. I'm not sure there should be a charge for that, because like I said, we do charge an additional cost to put in that meter to begin with. But, you know, I'm not sure your house, if people go on vacation or something, that they, maybe they should pay that shut-off, I mean, that $25 or whatever, if they don't have their regular house. I'm not sure that should apply to the irrigation meters, so that's a...
The $25 shut-off and turn-on does not apply to the irrigation meter.
Okay.
It's just the minimum billing while they're turned off, that continues, that continues on.
On the irrigation meters?
On all meters, doesn't matter where they are. It's, it's the minimum charge, whether the meter's off or whether it's on.
I got you.
The $25 applies only to homes and businesses and whatever else, but it specifically states in the code that for irrigation meters, there's no charge for turning them off or on.
Probably because most irrigation meters are gonna have to be turned off in the wintertime to keep from freezing. I'm, I'm not sure, because of your, your sprinkler system and your yards. Or a lot of them may be just having a frostproof hose bib, too, so...
And I don't, I don't have how many irrigation meters we have. I probably can come up with those numbers, but I don't know right off the top of my head.
Before I, you know, really get into this, I'd like to know how many, what the irrigation, what the breakdown is between irrigation and the homes.
Okay, and we're not starting this until the April billing. But in all fairness to everybody that's on vacation and so forth, you know, instead of just doing it, snap your fingers, it'll be the first billing in April that this will apply to. And to kind of, you know, make it easier on people so that, you know, they can take corrective action if they want to or, or whatever. But would it, I'm just asking this as a question, since we're gonna try to have this study done, would it be prudent, maybe, to wait to change anything until we have that study done and then bring this into, into part of that study? I don't know, I'm asking.
I'd definitely be in favor of that.
Motion to postpone till April meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Lady seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, this will have to go person to person. Yeah, might as well, you know? I didn't, I didn't hear some answers.
Ms. Ballance?
Yes.
To postpone, okay. Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Pannell?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
No.
Four two.
Four two, all right. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is number four, discussion of the planning of invasive species.
Motion to discuss.
Second?
Second.
All right, please, Ms. Ballance, to the other floor.
I've been contacted by several people who are having an issue with invasive species. Most, most of the people who've talked to me about this have been talking about bamboo specifically. Apparently, there are several properties where people have neighbors and they have planted bamboo. This bamboo has been planted with, with no kind of barriers, and some of the people are either not available to take care of it or choose not to take care of it. And so this, this bamboo is invading the neighbor's properties. One of the people who talked to me about it said, "Her property line is several feet away from her house, and the bamboo has encroached to her foundation." It's there. Now, she's trying to fight it, she's trying to get rid of it, but it's, it's there and it's been planted, and nobody's taking care of it, except she's trying to, and, and it's an issue for her, and there's been some other people who have also said the same thing. And I understand that that can be an issue, and I understand that some things are just really hard to control, and then they're already here. I mean, there's other invasive spec, species as well, like Venca and, and different things, Ivies and all sorts of different things like that. So, I was just hoping to open a dialogue about this and maybe get some ideas here at the table, or maybe we might choose to kick it to planning, the planning commission, to get some ideas of, maybe some way to regulate the planning of invasive species, where if people chose to plant those things, they should have sufficient barriers to where they won't jump the barriers and invade the other people's properties and so forth. So that's why I brought this up, and that's what I'm hoping we can talk about and come to some kind of a, a solution or find some remedies, or I just would like to talk about it. So if you gentlemen would like to chime in, I'd welcome that.
I'd like, I'd like to turn this over to planning.
Is that a motion?
We have planning news.
Fall within their purview?
I'd second that.
I mean, if you're gonna turn it over to planning, I understand what you're saying, but I would caution you that planning may not be able to do a lot with it either, really encroachment to your property from someone else's property by animals or plants, those fall under as civil actions that landowner can bring against the other landowner. It's not really something that most governmental units get involved in. The state of Arkansas knows as far as this old eradication they have in statute that makes it illegal to allow thistles to grow up on your property. But beyond that, if you get too much into regulating what you can and can't plant in your own yard, you're gonna get into the area of whether you're taking someone's property because they can't use it for their own purpose. So, before you just shovel it into planning, you may want to give them some guidance as to how, how far you want them to get into the idea of taking somebody's property rights. And the government's been very, very conscious over the last hundred years that if you take somebody's property by limiting what they can do with it, that can become an action against the governmental body for taking their rights away from them. And it can be monetary against the city.
Mr. Vina?
I agree with the city attorney, I mean, seeds born on the wind, you know, less government is best government, and I just, I've not had a phone call, an email, I've not been contacted by anybody that this is an issue. I would rather not spend our time on something that may be a one-person issue at this point in time. I don't see kudzu growing all over the place. Yeah, there's some stands of bamboo, I don't see them out of control at this point. I really think we have better things to do with our time.
Any further, Ms. Ballance?
When you, when you live in a city, or in our case, when you live in a village, they say good fences make good neighbors. And so, it would seem it would be a responsibility of this, of the city, at least to a point, to protect neighbors, to, to, I mean, we could allow people to plant bamboo, but if they decide, you know, for instance, if they decided to do that, perhaps they should have some kind of barrier that protects their neighbors. I mean, I'm not saying that people can't plant it, but when it, when it overruns onto their neighbor's property and their neighbors don't want it, that, that becomes an issue. I think it seems like part of the responsibility of a city is to protect, protect their inhabitants. There are certain things...